...appear more alert. That's why, beginning next year, the program extends to 266 other L.A. Unified campuses. Schools where most of the students come from low-income families and are more likely to skip the traditional breakfast. It's called the Food for Thought Program, funded by L.A. Unified and the nonprofit group L.A. Fund for Public Education.
This partnership is going to flower and grow and become an important part of what we do to make sure that kids are ready to learn.
And it will provide access for hundreds of thousands of high-poverty students, give them a nutritious start to their day.
L.A. Unified hopes to expand the breakfast program to nearly 680 campuses within three years. Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
Elementary school students will spend the first 10 minutes of class eating with teachers, while middle school and high school students will be able to grab meals at campus kiosks and bring them to first period. In these tough economic times, putting food on the table isn't always easy. Recently, thousands of struggling families received some compassion and much-needed help.
From necessities like fresh fruits and vegetables, to conveniences like diapers for those with infants at home, to gifts like books and toys for young kids, this giveaway at Ted Watkins Park in Watts brought out over 1,000 people in need of assistance.
I'm here because I did need some things for the home, and I'm glad that they do have this out for the community. So, yeah, I do appreciate this.
SEIU 721, Hearts of Compassion Distribution, and L.A. County Food Bank, along with several other groups, partnered up to organize this giveaway in response to the increases in the unemployment rate, gas prices, and the price of groceries.
It's really a way to touch the community, especially in a time of need. But we should remember, what we really need to do is we need to advocate to get people back to work in this country, so the lines aren't quite so long at this event. That's what we really want to accomplish.
Councilmember Joe Buscaino, who represents Watts, came down to meet in person those in his district who are struggling to put food on the table.
With high unemployment rates, with tough economic times, with high health care costs, what we're seeing here is a true spirit of what we're all about.
You're helping these people that need food, that are hungry, and there's no reason for people to be hungry.
On this night, families won't have to go hungry.
I think this is a wonderful blessing from God. You know what I'm saying? Thank God for it.
And those families who pulled their cars into the park looking for help left with trunks full of supplies and food, and hearts full of gratitude.
This is the third year that this combination of organizations has coordinated the event. Now turning to an event being billed the city's biggest block party, where more than 100,000 residents are expected to take over L.A.'s busy streets. Cindy San Luis has more on the city's fourth, Siklavia.
Ten miles of streets citywide will be closed to cars and open for people to walk, jog, bicycle, roller skate, and simply enjoy Los Angeles in a safe and fun way during this year's Siklavia, a family-friendly street festival being held on April 15th.
Siklavia began about 30 years ago in Bogota, Columbia, as a response to the congestion and pollution in the streets. They are now held throughout Latin America and the United States. This will be the fourth event in Los Angeles.
You get to see a city that I grew up in my entire life, and sometimes you see it differently when you get on a bike.
Siklavia is a collaboration between the city of Los Angeles, the nonprofit organization Siklavia, and the cycling community to encourage healthy, active transportation. Siklavia is free and open to the public.
You get to meet your neighbors. You notice that you have a coffee shop on the corner that you've been living right next to for a few years, but just sped by before.
We're talking about a change in culture, and Siklavia is doing that.
Many see Siklavia as a what-if for the city's future.
What if cars no longer monopolize the streets? What if we had a bustling street life all the time? What if we had walking paths uniting our diverse neighborhoods?
This year's Siklavia 10-mile route will stretch to South Los Angeles, Boyle Heights, Little Tokyo, downtown, Westlake, and MacArthur Park, Koreatown, and into East Hollywood. From MacArthur Park, I'm Cindy San Luis for L.A. this week.
And this year, the city is partnering with Bike Nation, the only Los Angeles-based bike-share company, to provide 100 free bikes for Siklavia to the first Angelinos to sign up online. Go to bikenationusa.com for more info. Now updating a story we reported on last week, the former school police officer who lied about being shot makes a huge payout to the city of Los Angeles. Gil Reyes takes us to city council chambers for the check presentation.
City leaders present the check. Over $309,000 for a bizarre hoax that sparked unnecessary concern at this high school last year.
And the message is very simple. If you commit a crime, there's consequences. But if you cost the city resources, in this particular case, from the Police Department, Department of Transportation, other allied agencies, there's going to be a cost.
Former Los Angeles school police officer Jeffrey Stenruss was convicted of staging his own shooting. The hoax pulled off at the El Camino High School campus in Woodland Hills. It triggered a massive and costly manhunt for a suspect who didn't exist.
Now, don't ever forget what it was like to see the faces of the kids who had to be shuttled out of their own school because of the climate of fear.
The manhunt lasted 10 hours. Councilmember Dennis Zein led an effort to recoup the city's losses. He got it in the form of this restitution check paid for by the friends and family of Jeffrey Stenruss. In exchange for the restitution, a judge let Stenruss post bail pending the outcome of an appeal. Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
Prosecutors say Stenruss may have shot himself intentionally to gain attention. Stenruss's lawyer says it happened accidentally while he was cleaning his gun. April is National Distracted Driving Awareness Month. The first week of the month was also designated California's Teen Safe Driving Week. Anna Marcos takes us to one high school where authorities are trying to drum the message home: that reckless and distracted driving kills.
It's only a mock accident scene, but it's a frightening scenario, made purposely so to impress the teens watching. This event helps highlight California's Distracted Driving Awareness Month and focuses on teen safe driving habits. The messages, things like texting, cell phones, putting on the radio, and even joking around, can be recipes for disaster. Just ask one mom who lost her 16-year-old son when he went driving with friends.
You know, it was just chaos in that car, singing and laughing, and the three boys in the backseat wrestling around over a Monster drink and a bag of chips. There was no drugs, there was no drinking involved. They were just having a good time. I just wish one more time I could tell him, "I love you, Donovan," and I could hear him respond, "I love you too, Mom."
There was plenty here to sober teens up, including a driving course that shows what happens when you have a lot of driving distractions. Basically, plenty of cones knocked over, cones that in a real-life situation could be other cars or other people.
I didn't do very well. I hit a lot of cones, and I was trying to answer her and talk and mess with the radio like she was telling me to.
Every driver at some point has been distracted by a call, a text, a passenger in the vehicle, maybe even some kind of a pet. In fact, many of these brief distractions while driving may have lead to close calls, collisions for some, and tragically injury or death for others.
Authorities say teens are most susceptible to distracted driving. Every 15 minutes, they say, a teen dies in a car accident due to either DUI or distracted driving.
Having the courage to tell your passengers, to tell yourself to stop, to back off and focus on driving is the right thing to do.
That means no texting, no talking on the cellphone, pay attention to driving.
All in the hopes that these teens don't end up in an ambulance, or worse yet, the coroner's van. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
In 2009 and 2010, authorities say California saw 53,000 accidents caused by distracted driving. And as the LAPD captain mentioned, pets can also be a driving distraction. Rasha Goel shares some tips and rules for motorists traveling with dogs and even horses.
Just like you would never think of putting your child in your car and driving to the store without securing them, same thing with a pet.
And that's why the LAPD is helping educate Angelinos on how to safely drive with animals on board, whether that animal is a dog or a horse.
Always watch your speed, always have a seatbelt, both for yourself and your dog, and your horse is securely secured in the trailer.
Harnesses are available to help secure dogs with seatbelts.
This loop is designed to work with the seatbelt system in your car.
For dogs, experts also suggest using a pet barrier or carriers.
We have your typical carrier, which most people use. This is what I use. Loops around the seatbelt, and all little dogs are totally safe in these things. Then we have the big pet barrier. It's for most SUVs, crossovers, minivans. And it's a pressure-mounted system that's totally adjustable, and it can keep your dog safe in the back. It's usually for large dogs.
For the equestrian community, officials remind owners to secure horses in their trailers while traveling, and for riders to stay on horse trails as much as possible.
Horseback riders have to follow the same rules that pedestrians and motor vehicles do. It is important that most riders will understand this, that they don't want to ride on the sidewalk, they don't want to ride on the street, they want to get off that as quickly as they can.
The bottom line: safety, for both the motorists and their animal friends. In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. this week.
As the city of L.A. tries to balance its budget, one organization puts city and business leaders in one room with the goal of making sense out of the dollars being spent in the city. Here again is Rasha Goel.
It's a meeting of the minds as city and business leaders gather at a recent luncheon to address the fiscal challenges and possible solutions for getting the city of angels on the road to economic recovery. While city officials are hopeful, they say they're up against a challenge.
We have reduced the number of public employees that we have now to a level that we haven't seen in many, many years. We've eliminated thousands of positions. We've already worked with our bargaining unis to try to bring down the costs of benefits.
While the 2011-2012 fiscal year is balanced at this time, city officials say the 2012-2013 fiscal year, which starts July 1st, is starting off with a $220 million deficit. A hypothetical situation would be to make changes to city departments such as Animal Services and the Bureau of Street Services.
You would have to take out the general fund portion of those departments. In some cases, it would eliminate the departments altogether or keep a very small one to solve for 220. The good news about doing that is that, once you do it, then it reduces your future deficit significantly, because those are all ongoing cuts. The bad news is that you'll have a hard time functioning as a city.
While getting rid of city departments may not be a feasible option, one possible solution suggested was addressing uncollected debt. Currently, in the city of Los Angeles, there is an estimated $450 million in uncollected debt.
Half of it comes from the Fire Department for ambulance billings, of which a significant portion of that comes from indigent individuals who will never pay that debt. The other half comes from our transportations, which is mainly citations.
Other ideas being considered include reducing salaries by 10% for sworn and civilian employees, freezing police hiring during the year 2012-2013, and requiring 10% employee contribution to health care by civilian employees.
Overall, I think the information was very, very, very important, because it not only applies to the downtown area, but I think throughout Los Angeles.
City leaders say one goal they are especially focused on is aggressively creating quality jobs in the city. In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. this week.
Despite financial woes at City Hall, there are signs of growth downtown, such as the announcement that two more Marriott hotels are being built there. Anna Marcos reports.
A champagne toast for the man of the hour, Mr. Bill Marriott. The birthday boy got his own Lakers t-shirt as a present, but he's bringing downtown L.A. another kind of gift in the form of two new hotels.
What happens here in downtown helps our entire city.
This will be a new, one-of-a-kind tourist attraction, basically two hotels in one, with the Courtyard Marriott on one side, the Residence Inn on the other, to attract a wider diversity of visitors to downtown L.A.
This is one of the first dual-branded Courtyard Residence Inn projects that Marriott has done. There's one under construction right now back east. This is the first one on the West Coast. Kind of a different customer.
We didn't have any extended-stay opportunities, and now leisure, family, and business travelers can find what they're looking for here.
Marriott already has two luxury hotels near the convention center, the JW Marriott and the Ritz Carlton, which, together with L.A. Live, the Staples Center, and other projects, have started a renaissance in the area. But city leaders remember when they started to build, the odds against them were great.
There were a lot of naysayers. There were a lot of folks who said, "Oh, nobody's going to come to downtown." There were a number of us who understood that this part of the city was yearning for that kind of investment, that people actually do want to come downtown.
Still, L.A.'s got a lot of catching up to do if it wants to compete for tourist dollars. A recent hotel survey shows most cities average 7,300 hotel rooms downtown, while L.A. only has 1,700.
This is a battle that we need to win, and this is a battle that, if we do win, will make L.A. one of the top two or three points and destinations for conventions, for events, and for tourism.
The two new Marriots will add another 400 rooms to L.A.'s hotel roster. Groundbreaking could begin later this spring. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
And the Marriott New Hotel Project is scheduled to be completed in the summer of 2014. And growing demand from tourists is also the reason that Turkish Airlines is adding more flights after just one year in service at LAX. As Anita Bennett reports, the airline enlisted a major star to help celebrate its success.
With the sniff of a ribbon, Kobe Bryant helped Turkish Airlines launch its new daily service at Los Angeles International Airport.
The travel is extremely comfortable. It's the best, and it's the one-year anniversary of opening the gates of flying from Los Angeles to Turkey.
The L.A. Laker serves as global ambassador for the airline, which is increasing its nonstop flights to Istanbul from four to seven days a week.
It's making it so easy and so convenient for the passengers who is traveling to Middle East Asia or Africa, you know?
The Turkish consul general admitted he's impressed by the airline's prices.
Now we have the opportunity to fly directly to Istanbul comfortably and with reasonably good prices.
Several passengers agreed.
I chose Turkish Airlines because it is not expensive.
Rate-wise, it was the best rate, so that's why we chose it.
Since Turkish Airlines arrived at LAX last March, its business has soared, so has the number of Turkish tourists visiting Southern California.
We certainly appreciate their commitment to Los Angeles and the success of the flight, and we continue to hope to work with them to get into the new building and get them a really good operation in a brand-new facility.
And the airline says it decided to increase service here to Los Angeles because of stepped-up demand from its passengers to visit Hollywood. At LAX, I'm Anita Bennett for L.A. this week. Another possible water and power bill increase, formerly homeless individuals embraced by their new neighbors, and cherry blossoms at the L.A. Convention Center. These stories and more in City Beat.
Your water and power bill could increase by a combined $6 over the next two years. The Los Angeles Department of Water and Power has proposed a 10.5% increase in power rates and an increase of almost 5% in water rates over two years. That's about $3.35 for most residential power customers and $2.53 for monthly water bills. General Manager Ron Nichols says the rate hikes are necessary in order for the utility to meet renewable energy mandates. LAPD's Valley Traffic Division recently held a pedestrian crosswalk safety and enforcement operation near Universal Studios at the intersection of Lancashire Boulevard and Campo de Cahuenga. The goal: to crack down on motorists who fail to stop for pedestrians crossing the street, as well as pedestrians who cross on the "don't walk" sign.
When you're out there driving, look after the pedestrians if you're behind the wheel, and if you're a pedestrian, just because you have the green light doesn't mean you should step off the curb. Look, listen, then proceed when it's safely. Safety is number one.
PATH, or People Assisting the Homeless, along with developer-related California, recently celebrated the grand opening of the La Cretz Villas on North Juanita Avenue in Silver Lake. The villas will provide affordable, permanent housing to 48 homeless or special-needs individuals.
For one young resident, Jamie, La Cretz Villa is the first permanent home she's had in more than a decade. And shortly after moving into her apartment here, her apartment was fully stocked by our Silver Lake residents, neighbors who said, "You are part of our neighborhood."
The apartments are named after real estate developer Morton LaCretz, who donated the property where La Cretz now stands. A grove of cherry blossom trees gifted to the city of Los Angeles by the Japanese consulate and the Huntington Library was recently planted at the L.A. Convention Center. The trees celebrate the longstanding relationship between Los Angeles and its sister city of Nagoya, Japan, which dates back to 1959.
And I know that these trees on either side of us are a symbol of our future and our good luck and to our health as a city.
2012 also marks the 100th anniversary of the gift of thousands of cherry blossoms from Japan to the United States, which were planted in Washington, D.C.
Did you know that every dollar invested in preparedness saves more than $4 in post-disaster response? Rasha Goel has more on what's being done in Los Angeles to help us prepare for the next big disaster.
Of the 16 possible natural disasters outlined by the Robert T. Stafford Act, 13 of them can happen here, in the Southland, here in L.A.
With those types of statistics, how prepared are Angelinos?
We have a kit with supplies and whatnot.
I have a plan, and I have the makings of an emergency kit. They're maybe not all in one place.
To better help Angelinos prepare for life-threatening disasters, the American Red Cross of Greater Los Angeles, Los Angeles Emergency Management Department, and Edison International have launched Prepare SoCal.
This Prepare SoCal campaign is a three-year effort to engage our residents in being prepared for when disaster strikes.
You are the epicenter of your preparedness, so if each individual is prepared, that means the family is prepared, that means the neighborhood is prepared, the community, the city, et cetera.
There are three basic essentials everyone should know. First, have an emergency kit in your home, office, or car, and don't forget to include things such as your medicine and glasses in there. Secondly, have a plan. Know how to be in touch with your family members and know how to communicate with them. Also designate an out-of-state contact, so if you can't reach your family members locally, they know who to call into. And lastly, be informed. Know what can happen to you if a natural disaster were to occur.
In a catastrophic earthquake, we will need to shelter up to half a million people in greater Los Angeles, and we will have to feed up to 4 million meals a day.
Jamie Lee Curtis, actress and member of the Red Cross Celebrity Cabinet, was also on hand to emphasize the importance of being prepared.
Just going like, "Yeah, yeah, uh-huh, yeah, disasters happen, oh, yeah, I know about that." It doesn't help you, it doesn't move you forward. You really need to be prepared.
Not just you, but the entire family. From downtown Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. this week.
Edison International donated $1.5 million toward the Prepare SoCal campaign. For more information on the program, you can visit preparesocal.org or readyla.org. And in this week's list of things to do, public pianos, getting to know the wild, and another reminder to get out for Siklavia.
Here's an event that incorporates art, music, and public space into one unique experience. Play Me, I'm Yours by artist Luke Sharon is an unprecedented county-wide free public art installation featuring 30 pianos decorated by local artists and set up in public spaces for Angelinos to play 24/7. The installation is presented by the Los Angeles Chamber Orchestra and runs Thursday, April 12th to Thursday, May 3rd. The pianos will be set up in public areas throughout L.A. County, including downtown L.A., San Pedro, Panorama City, and Boyle Heights. Go to streepianos.com for specific locations. And get to know your wild neighbors at this special launch event for kids on Saturday, April 14th at the Griffith Observatory, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. The Get to Know Event will feature games and exhibits for the whole family to help create awareness and understanding of our outdoor environment and wildlife. Councilman Tom Labond will also be leading a hike up Mount Washington at 10:00 a.m. The Griffith Observatory is located at 2800 East Observatory Road. Go to get-to-know.org and click on Events for more information. L.A.'s next car-free street closure event for cyclists, skaters, and pedestrians takes place on April 15th. 10 miles of roadways will temporarily close to traffic for this Ford Siklavia, which will expand to include the Central Boyle Heights to East Hollywood route, plus the original route through East Hollywood, Koreatown, Westlake, downtown L.A., and Little Tokyo. For more information, go to siklavia.org. And remember, you can find this information on our Facebook page, and that's a look at some upcoming things to do.
And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow us on Facebook. We leave you now with some more sights and sounds of Siklavia. See you back here next week for more of L.A. this week.
Today's lesson: how to exercise with your kids and save the planet. First, you must believe, seeing that your children really are the future. Second, you must do. Instead of jumping in the car, let's go for a walk, or a run, or even a bike ride. No pollution, no oil, no gas. And as long as you obey ultra-safety rules, we're cool. Lastly, you have to live. Live into our big, beautiful, healthy future. We do live. Watch the road.
Hi, I'm Craig Erwin in Los Angeles.
Hi, I'm Trenton Ramory, and you're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, Our City, Our Channel.[1580.26] Channel.
Good morning. This is the 10th day of April 2012. This is the Los Angeles City Council meeting on this date, the John F. R. Chambers in the historic Grand City Hall of Los Angeles. We have a special presentation. I'd like to call on Mr. Reyes, if we could, at this time, on a very special presentation as we begin our meeting momentarily. Councilman of the 1st District, Ed Reyes. Yeah, council, let's attention now for a special presentation of Mr. Ed Reyes of the 1st District. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I believe Councilman Weisar will be joining me. I'd like to invite Councilman Garcetti, if he'd like to join us. And as Councilman Ronald Cohen enters, Councilman Cardenas, if we can have them join us as well. Good morning. Members of the council, today, we are honoring one of the true institutions of this great city. This year, as many of us who watch Channel 34 already know, we are making, we are marking the 50th anniversary of the birth of Univision KMEX in Los Angeles. Let's give a big round of applause. With me today to celebrate are Alberto Mier Itarán. He's the Senior Vice President and General Manager, Mayola Delgado, Community Affairs Manager, and Marco Flores, KMEX News Director. KMEX 34 Los Angeles first began broadcasting on September 30th, 1962, as a Spanish-language television station. I believe Danny Villanueva, a former Dallas Cowboy kicker, was the first owner. But later that decade, KMEX broadcast Escuela, a four-times-per-week program that taught basic English to viewers of all nationalities, was hosted by a Los Angeles School District teacher who encouraged students to mail in exercises for grading. And let's invite my colleague, Councilman Cardenas, to join us. Today, KMEX offers a Spanish-language programming format featuring news, talk shows, dramas, movies, and other programming that has, over the decades, featured such classic programming as Sabado Gigante, and telenovelas such as Dos Mujeres Un Camino. I don't know if one of you guys knows that song. Corazón Sablaje, and even Los Ricos También Lloran, even The Rich Cry. I remember back in the 1990s and 80s, going through a process with my parents, with my mom, and I would watch them in the evenings, watching telenovelas, and there'd be community meetings going on, and she'd be, "Well, I'm tired. I've been working all day. Let me relax. Let me rest." And I always felt that there was a sense of urgency to be out and about in the community. But Channel 34 was a learning tool, an educational tool, a tool that helped my parents assimilate into this society. But you also have fun. You had programs, and who doesn't know Don Francisco? And he is an institution throughout the Americas, in the Western Hemisphere. These have become institutional memories for our community. For five decades, KMEX 34 has continuously provided quality programming. But the programming was unique in that it did not only aim to entertain its audience, but also aimed to serve LA and its particular Latino community. KMEX 34 Los Angeles marked and documented our community's history through some of its epic news programming, including in January 1970, when one of the most iconic persons in our city's history, Ruben Salazar, began serving as a news director while investigating allegations of police abuse against Latinos. And then again, in the mid-1980s, where KMEX continued its advocacy through information, particularly on behalf of immigrants' rights, while covering such issues as the 1984 Simpson and Mazoli Act. And then again, in 1994, through the now infamous Prop 187. So again, through this coverage, there has been a coming together Latinos in understanding our rights as citizens, as human beings, as residents, and it is because of their ability to cover these very controversial issues. And who can forget in 1992, when KMEX distinguished itself once again during the LA riots, when on April 29th and May 2nd, they interrupted programming more than 60 times with news updates that lasted from five minutes to 20 minutes, each while airing more than 20 complete special newscasts. Part of that landmark 1992 riot coverage included three editorials calling for calm and peace while providing constant reminders to Latino communities to protect and guard their families. Through the decades, KMEX has remained a loyal partner and defender of our community. They have been at the forefront of delivering news to communities across the nation since 1987, when they premiered the West Coast First National Spanish Language Nightingale Newscast, Noticiero Univision, replacing 24 Horas, a news program produced in Mexico City. Through the years, they have won more than their share of awards, including Emmys, Peabodys, the Governor's Award, and Tepe de Oro Award, which is considered to be the most prestigious Spanish awards for television. Today, they continue to unify generations of people, and not just monolingual and Spanish speakers either. KMEX Los Angeles is multi-generational. They reach multitudes of bilingual viewers, and consistently ranked as a top newscast in all Los Angeles, if not the region. Yet, through all their successes, there remain true. Our communities continue to look to KMEX Los Angeles for fairness, and they never failed us. In fact, they have built up a trust in the audience so they know where to go when there are serious issues affecting our communities. So when I said at the beginning of this presentation that we are celebrating our 50th anniversary, it is because I have always considered them a partner in serving the residents constituency of this wonderful city of Los Angeles, and for that, I thank you. So let's give them a big round of applause for their presence, for accomplishments, and I'd like to invite my colleagues to come and speak.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. I'll be very brief, because you had a very comprehensive presentation, but it's great to join with KMEX and wish them Felicidades on their 50th anniversary. It's really a stunning story, not just of a television station, but of the growth of a community here in Los Angeles. The stories that Mr. Reyes mentioned that recur in so many of our families when we would watch Channel 34 and see that and have the impact of what that meant, not only to have a voice, but to tell stories, to tell the stories of immigrants, to tell the stories of working people. And I especially want to thank, because I know we have three of the folks who are important in this aspect. I think that Spanish-language newscasts really set the bar, even for our English-language newscasts, in terms of helping their viewers get the resources they need to live good lives, whether that was immigration help, but also help in getting kids enrolled in healthcare, or help with homes that are being foreclosed on. It's a different model in which you see in the newsroom, where they actually set up folks who are there to assist our constituents, our residents of Los Angeles. And in doing so, KMEX has been an incredible bridge for the community here in Los Angeles and the resources to make their lives better. So congratulations on those 50 years, here's to the next 50 years of our city's history. It may be told with as much passion, with as much insight and fairness as you do. You set the bar for us in any language, en inglés o en español. Muchas gracias por su visión y su presencia.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilmember Reyes. You did a great job of summarizing 50 years of wonderful service and work that KMEX Univision has done here in Los Angeles and throughout the Americas in just six minutes. That was well done. Bien hecho. I just wanted to give my thanks, because this is an organization, a television station that has provided service for 50 years, not just entertainment, but service. As Councilmember Garcetti just mentioned, that they are involved in many, many communities, giving information, helping with information, when it comes to healthcare, or when it comes to immigrants' rights, or even just rights of human beings that are so cherished in this country. This is a station that is providing a service, not just entertainment. In addition to that, on a lighter note, I'm about 50 years old myself. I just want to thank them for not being 55 years old, as my parents had 11 children, and I was the last one. Thank God we didn't have a television. I might not be here. My parents' primary language was Spanish. And I remember growing up as a little boy in the 1960s and 70s, the number-one station that was on our television when we eventually got one was KMEX, and in Spanish, and it helped me learn Spanish as well. And I know that I could see it in my parents' eyes, that they enjoyed those moments, they enjoyed those noticias, those newscasts that were said in a language that they could understand, and they could actually learn from it. In addition to that, they were able to be entertained. My father used to work six days a week. Before the sun came up, he was already working as a gardener, like Dennis Zein's father did, another immigrant family. And my parents were able to enjoy just a few moments before turning in and be able to enjoy not only a language, but a culture that they so cherished. But at the same time, I want to let everybody know, just because somebody might watch television in Farsi, or Spanish, or some other language, does not mean that they're not assimilating. There's nothing wrong with immigrants being here in the United States of America and experiencing their culture here in the United States. It does help them assimilate, because once they understand what's going on here in their own language, it does translate every single day in the ways that they actually translate into their lives and in everything that they do. So I just want to say thank you for this station, for broadcasting in español, in Spanish, for now 50 years, and I'm sure that they know how to be more successful for the next 50 years, and also have people understand that in this country, you can speak any language you choose, and you are welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and 50 years, that sounds like a long time, but it really isn't. You know, Los Angeles and its Spanish-speaking population grew up with KMEX, and we see the number of Spanish-speaking individuals who now live in Los Angeles. We know that KMEX is providing a very important service, not only through its news, but through its entertainment and other things that it provides. I remember as a young boy, we would have our little black-and-white television in our living room that KMEX was on all the time. That's how we were entertained, that's how my parents got their news, and so I want to thank them, not only personally, but on behalf of the hundreds of thousands of Spanish-speaking individuals who live in Los Angeles, who depend on KMEX for their service. As we move forward, we know that Los Angeles' strength is diversity, and one thing that KMEX has done is integrate Spanish-speaking individuals in that diversity, because as you think about it, many individuals who come to this country who look for that entertainment, look for that news, it is KMEX and other Spanish-speaking outlets who have been there to provide that information. It's a very important service. So KMEX, congratulations, and thank you. Thank you for the laughs, for the information, but most importantly, thank you for your professionalism. May you have 50 more years of success.
I'm just pleased to join with my colleagues to celebrate the 50th anniversary of Univision. This is, you know, I, like Jose and my colleagues as well, remember going to my grandfather's house, and we would watch on very grainy TV, the bullfights, and so many other programs. And I have to tell you, the programming, when you compare it to today, was comical, even if it was a serious program. But we learned to appreciate it for, because it respected our culture. And frankly, growing up in a, I've never said this publicly, but when I was in the fifth grade, my classmates used to call me Little Black Sambo, because I was the darkest kid in the whole school. And so, growing up in that environment, with fear of discrimination, growing up during the 60s, and celebrating all that, to have a place where we could go to on the TV, even though I didn't speak Spanish very well, to recognize that that was my foundation, that was my history, that was my culture, and be proud of it, provided a very special element, not in terms of language skills, but more importantly, in terms of pride. And so, Univision, against all challenges, said that this market was here, it was growing, they invested in it heavily, and they produced. Not only the number-one, all the number-one TV shows, newscasts, the radio programs are all Spanish-speaking now in Los Angeles. As Tony pointed out to me, the largest Spanish-speaking population perhaps in the entire world lives in this region. So that's an incredible market, and for those companies that recognize that and invest their advertising in programming that Univision did, we salute them as well, because they provided a sense of what America was about to people who were transitioning. And so, I want to congratulate Univision. Today, they are a high-tech, very quality production company, and it reflects in the continued viewership that ranks amongst the highest ratings with all other TV shows in any language. And so, to that, congratulations, continued success, continued growth, and thank you for the pride, excuse me, thank you for the pride that you gave me as a young child.
Thank you very much. And with the presentation, Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, I'd like to just make a quick comment. I don't have la española, but I can say this about Channel 34. When I used to do a television show, I admired what KMEX did, because KMEX gave substantive, informative, informational programming, so people could learn what's going on in Los Angeles. And you really are a model for the other stations to appreciate that conversation, facts, information, discussions is what enhances and empowers people and makes a difference. I want to thank KMEX for doing that. Bless you. Thank you.
And Mr. Reyes, just to follow up, the KMEX was in a little studio right by Paramount, and Danny Villanueva, why I know is the great, Los Angeles Ram was the great executive with KMEX, so it's hard to believe 50 years have passed. Congratulations to everybody. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President, and with great honor, I'd like to invite the General Manager, Yadi Taran, if you'd like to come and share a few words.
Thank you very much. Thank you very, 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 very much. We've been serving LA for 50 years, and we've been very proud and are very appreciative of the fact that we've been able to serve this community for 50 years. I want to thank the City Council, I want to especially thank Councilman Reyes for his proclamation, for us, for us being here. This is, it means a lot to us. This station is an institution, people, and people talk about that we do very well in the ratings, and just to give you an idea, this is the most viewed television station in the country, regardless of language. Not, we don't compete, we lead the country in viewers because of our commitment, of our news director and the work that he does when talking about how we cover stories and how we become a resource to our community, and we're very proud and that, you know, we try to, we try to entertain, to inform and empower our community, and we're hopefully able to do it for another 50 years. We appreciate us being here. Thank you for the recognition, thank you for the opportunity, and thank you very much for everything. Okay?
With that, I'll read the last whereas. It says, "Los Angeles has become a landmark institution of the city of Los Angeles..." It says, "Los Angeles has become a landmark institution of the city of Los Angeles and the entire Southern California region for its commitment to our communities, reporting and documenting our region's history for the past half-century. KMEX." Please see that.
Thank you.[612.48][612.48](Applause). Thank you, thank you. Sure.
Less is more. Capture that photograph, Madam Clerk. In just a moment, I want you to call the roll, but wait till after this, please.
We're all Latino. We're all related.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Let's give KMEX a big hand at 50 years of great service to the Southern California community. This time, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon Buscayino, Cardenas, Englander, Garcetti, Wezar, Correz, Corrine, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Zine, Weston, 15 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Very good. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Rosendahl moves, Mr. Correz second, so ordered.
Commune of resolutions for approval.
Let's have Mr. Wezar move, Mr. Parks second, so ordered.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and now would be the time for the flag salute.
It's a great time in the John Farrow Chambers if we all rise for the flag salute. I'm going to ask the great Councilman of the 15th District, the newest member of the City Council, along with a very special guest of his, if you would introduce him, please, Councilman Joe Buscayino. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's a great honor to have my dad with me, Mateo Buscayino, and here at John Farrow Council Chambers. And if you please, join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much and thank your father. And appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next order.
Items 1 through 10 are items which public hearings have not been held, 10 votes required for consideration.
Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. We're going to, hold on in the back, and I don't want any calling out, Mr. Sacks. I'm listening to the clerk, not you. That's one warning. Madam Clerk, on this for consideration. Do we have any cards?
Yes, there are cards on items 1 through 10.
All right, let's hold those then, okay? Next item.
Mr. President, that takes counsel to general public comment or items called special.
Okay, we're going to do general public comment right now. Thank you. Sean Murphy. Mr. Dog. Pat McCosker. Here we go.
Thanks. Good morning, President, City Council. I heard there was an accident in downtown on the bike path. Something needs to be done. I am a biker too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Zooma Dog. And you can read all about me at zoomadog.com. 2013, Los Angeles candidate for mayor. Yes, if you check the ethic website, Zooma Dog will be on the ballot. Thank you. Now, six years ago, I came here because you people voted on law that violated my federal right, along with Mr. Matt Dowd, and then you continued to violate our rights here in council chambers. Now, we have already won in federal court over Venice Beach. And Carmen Duterte, I don't know if City Council realizes this, you have to pay our attorney fees. You have to pay. So Carmen Duterte, first he hired outside counsel for $100,000 initially, but he's going to run out, and then you will have to approve more money. Only to drag out a winning case, of which our attorney makes $750 an hour, and there's 11 of us on the case, and we have depositions coming up all this month, and the volumes of paperwork's going to be like this. Get ready, and if it goes to trial, you can get ready for about a million dollars just for our payment. Now, Carmen Duterte, I'd like to warn voters that he's being deceitful already. Yeah, Carmen Duterte, running for district attorney, got busted by a judge. I lied on my ballot designation. I was deceiving voters. I said I was Los Angeles chief, for the winner, except I forgot to say that I'm not the chief, and it's a county election in an insane city. Yeah, yeah, Carmen, the liar, Duterte, LA Times called me. Yeah, yeah, a judge yesterday said I had to change my ballot designation. Yeah, Carmen Duterte, I'm running for district attorney, and I've already lost in court before even on the ballot. Yeah, yeah, Carmen Duterte. So people know, he was busted by a judge yesterday for lying and deceiving people on the ballot, and we haven't even had the election yet. Yeah, Carmen Duterte, douchebag.
Morning. Councilmembers, Pat McCosker, President of United Firefighters. You know, I've been coming in every so often, unfortunately, to share with you some of the bad things that happened due to budget cuts in the fire department. Last week was another one of those. We actually had a fatality fire in Pacoima last week. The truck company that serves that district was out of the district. It was the domino effect of budget cuts. They were covering for someone else who was closed. And so when that dispatch came, you got just the engine company who got there quickly, like the truck would have, and didn't have a truck company. Took 10 minutes to get the truck, the replacement truck company there. They came from two districts away. The incident commander actually sent two ambulance crews to the roof, who had to go schlep and find a chainsaw and find ladders to get up on the roof to try to cut a ventilation hole to save that life. They couldn't do that in time. They did awesome work, but they couldn't get that done in time. We also, last week, had yet another crash of our dispatch system, another major failure of the dispatch system. And I was in that back room this morning, telling the EERC about that and the need to keep our sworn firefighters on duty. Because if the fire chief gets his way, if he follows his orders, like he has so far on these budget cuts and gets his way, he's going to reduce by 43% the amount of staff on duty in our dispatch center while these crashes are happening. We need those people every day, and if it hadn't been for them being there now while these crashes happen, it would have been unbelievable devastation. So we need to fix that, and I know many of you don't even know about that yet. And then finally, one more thing happened last week, and it's the flip side. We had a fire captain have a heart attack and die last week, but we saved him. He was out on the fire truck, driving around, he slumped forward, pulses and non-breathing. The guy saw it, they swerved to the curb, they yanked him out, and the EMT firefighters shocked him back to life, and he went home from the hospital yesterday. That's the flip side. When we're there on time, we save lives. When we're there within the first minute, we save them 90% of the time when that happens. When we're there 10 minutes later, we save less than a tenth of 1%. That's the difference.
Thank you very much. Michael Colleone, Arnold Sacks, Arneak Norjarian.
I've got a solution for the firemen that just spoke. Since Mr. Wezar's office doesn't do anything around here, why doesn't he fire Eric Martel and give that money to the fire department? So they can hire a fireman? Wow. I know in my community, response is slow. I see fire departments going like chickens with no heads. But I sit here as the fireman speaks, Mr. Parks is in the book, Ms. Perry's not paying attention, Mr. Zine was having a conversation, Mr. Cardenas was talking to his staff.
Hold the clock, please. Hold the clock, please. Madam City Attorney, I'm going to ask the speaker to address the chair. That's the rules. Right to me. Right to me. Thank you. Address the chair, start the clock again.
I can address the City Council, not the chair. Well, somebody explain to him. He doesn't even know who can get disqualified for how long. Maybe the chair should learn what the responsibilities and obligations are to sit on that chair. Because Mr. Labange doesn't know if a person can get kicked out for a month or a day. Maybe he should learn what it takes to sit on that chair first, before he sits here and tells people what to do. Okay? I don't have to speak to the chair. I can speak to the TV, just like everybody else does, and I can speak to the council members, just like everybody else does. Or do I have to be from a different country? I'm sorry, but I was born here, this is my country. And I'll be damned if you're going to sit there and tell me how I can do it and what I can and cannot do about it. Let's get that much straight. Okay? Now, back to where I was before I was rudely interrupted, and then he has an audacity to tell people to shut up out here. The nerve of you. I don't understand this. The city's going to hell in a handbasket, and you're going to sit up there and dictate. Now, I'm all confused on where I got to go, I'm upset. So I guess I'll just salute you. High hit now.
Arnold Sacks. Mr. Corretz.
Is there any way to deal with that last comment by that last speaker? Certainly seems inappropriate and disruptive.
Our City Attorney, you want to rule that, Madam City Attorney? I'm offended, but I don't want to violate the law. What I really would like, members, is if people come and have public comment, that we listen to them, but they direct it through the chair, not personal remark. In addition to that, in addition to that, I would like CLA staff, all staff, to assist the people, so they don't come here just speaking without any consequence of some success to their thoughts.
I mean, I don't know what else to say. Don't start yet, but I mean, that's a highly offensive thing. Frankly, it hasn't disrupted the meeting yet, but I'm very tempted to go over there and clock them. I mean, that's, and that will disrupt the meeting.
Councilmember?
Certainly was designed to elicit that kind of response, and I'm not having any of it.
Councilmember, understood. And we would be happy to brief the council on the applicable standards, but there's certainly no disagreement regarding the offensiveness of the conduct, but there would have to be some, we believe, further discussion and briefing as to the disruption.
I'm not sure what that means. How are you addressing this now?
Councilmember, I believe that you can respond to it as you did with your comments. And again, I would be glad to brief you further as to the exact legal parameters, but in order, you can express your disagreement with it, and that has been done. If you're asking me if it's a basis to evict someone from the council chamber, I believe our advice is, is that it must, in fact, have caused an actual disruption.
Well, I'm very close to causing that myself as a result, so.
Paul, I'm very, I'm very sensitive to your concerns, but I know Mr. Colleone, and I will ask him to chat with me, because I know where he comes from his heart. And I'll ask to talk to him to make sure, see if I can get a commitment from him that that will not occur again. He's not that type of a person. I think he was emotionally engaged and just afford me the opportunity to chat with him. I know him to be a good and honorable man, but I'm also very sensitive, because we've had individuals come in here and use, you know, words that are very offensive to African-Americans as well. And so, we need to have some discussions. I think the public needs to know that we appreciate the things that they say, and we want to protect their right to speak, but that this needs to be done in, with decorum, it needs to be done in a professional way. And hopefully, we can get to a point where that will occur. So with that said, Mr. Labange, and then Mr. Rosendahl.
I sat back in my chair. I was absolutely aghast with his statement. I worry about our words that we are allowed to have or not have in this public meeting. That being said, I stand with you, Paul, and the offensive words that the gentleman spoke of at that podium, and I apologize for how the words were spoken on a public microphone, and they should never be spoken.
Mr. Rosendahl.
I also, with Mr. Corretz and Mr. Labange, was extremely offended by that comment. It deals with the Second World War, and approximately nine million people were genocide in that war. And to just say that expression is over the top and frankly, wrong. And Madam City Attorney, I think we should investigate if one can just do this in a public forum. It is not a simple word to say that. It brings back all the memories of World War II and the atrocities that were committed during that period. It's not a greeting, it is an outrageous statement. And as a German, from German parents who suffered through that process too, I'm appalled and outraged, and as a gay man, to know my people were rounded up too and genocide in that Holocaust situation. That is not a light term, and it's not a funny term. It's an outrageous and an immoral term that should never be used in the United States government. Thank you.
And all members share your sentiment, and all members stand with you, Mr. Corretz. Okay, Mr. Sacks?
Yes, thank you. Good morning. Quite a dog and pony show. So let's talk about some facts. LA Count, well, here. LA Committee moves ahead with paper, plastic ban. Mr. Corretz, I'm the last one to allow for layoffs in LA City, and I fight them hard. But I never stood and said that if a job doesn't make sense anymore, that we've got to keep that job. So, Mr. Corretz, paying attention, as normal, what do you have to say about Councilman Reyes being on the goal-line construction authority, who really isn't the goal-line construction authority, because it goes nowhere near any part of LA City? Keeping a job that doesn't make any sense? But that's different, because he was appointed to a position that he resigned from that didn't exist until state legislation made it official in 2011. And Mr. Englander, your outrage over what happened with the power outage and calling for the firing, let me give you a hint. It took him like six months, and we still don't know about the DWP workers who were caught on camera drinking and leaving a strip club, and they didn't get fired. So, slow your roll. And LA Council studies hotel incentives. I don't know, have you been paying attention to the news lately about the Supreme Court having a hearing about the President's health care initiative, where everybody's required to have health care? Here, the city wants to allow people in the hotel business to get $4 more an hour, but eliminate health care. So Councilman Garcetti, do you support President Obama and his policy? Councilman Weston, Councilman Parks, Councilman Perry, Councilman Labange, Councilman Rosendahl, Councilman Zine, do you support the President and his health care act? Well, how can you say you support it if you want to eliminate health care for the poorest people who work in the city? And what about the rich ones? What about the union? What about you guys?
Thank you. Thank you. Armanak Norjanian, followed by Matt Dowd. No, wait, okay, let's not, now that's disruption in the council. Let's keep our voices down. Mr. Norjanian.
Yeah. Good morning, respectable City Council members. Good morning, fellow Angelinos. My name is Armanak Norjanian, I'm a liberal Democrat and human rights advocate. It is such a run for a seat of California State Assembly from South Central Los Angeles, so-called 59th District. I ask all the African-American and Hispanic voters, Latino voters, to vote for me, and most progressive liberal Democrat who would grant Angelinos the amnesty with big time, so that all those applicants for the driver's license wouldn't be required to disclose my immigration status, which is actually a violation of federal prerogative to enforce foreign policy in the first place. I also promise to raise taxes against wealthy individuals and rich oil and producer and gasoline seller corporation 50% in order to remedy budget deficit in California, create more jobs of government contract. I believe in the distribution of wealth and creating jobs with state government contracts, you know, given more contracts to private entrepreneurs, which has been done in California for decades. I also propose to create California State Cell Phone Service for rural forested areas and total water of California shores. I will create state legislation to control CAGM, with live satellite surveillance, in order to dispose of CAGM on California freeways and highways. Actually, as the city of Los Angeles doesn't Actually, as the city of Los Angeles does not raise taxes against those oil manufacturing corporations, I believe the city government makes a big mistake, and asks city council members to raise taxes against gasoline selling corporations at least $2, in spite of a failed proposition law. The proposed law actually failed by only 1%, and 49% of voters of Angelenos will side with me, you know, trying to raise taxes against 50% against gasoline selling corporations. Well, nowadays, the governor's office, the government branch office only raises taxes only 3% against those wealthy individuals.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd.
So let me get this straight, a city councilman and a former state assemblyman is threatening to come over here to the public and assault someone? That's what I just heard on Channel 35. Paul Keretz said he wants to come over and clock someone five minutes after pledging allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which then the First Amendment is freedom of expression. That's what we do! It's so annoying. Tom Labonge is such an idiot. The case law right now in the Ninth Circuit protects that. That's what it was about! You dummy! It's so dumb, because I handed all that stuff out to you guys, to go read it, and that's what the Ninth Circuit said, and I've never, ever seen Michael Carrion do that before, ever! So he's clearly not a Hitler Youth or anything, so all your disgust is actually pointed at Tom Labonge, because he's the one they were referring to acting like that evil empire. Do you understand the expression, it was because of Tom Labonge that someone who's never done that had to just express it? Do you understand that? The Ninth Circuit holds you liable, Tom Labonge, for damages for that, and you, Paul Keretz. Now here's what else is happening, I'm going to my depositions on April 23, and talk about what you do to immigrants and all your immigrant thing, look at me, I'm an immigrant, and I got six years of harassment, and I go to the depositions, and I've got my $750 an hour attorney, and you've got your $300 Myers Navy attorney, and there's a $150 court reporter, and I get to talk for hours and hours and hours about all the stuff you did to me for six fucking years!
Okay, now wait a minute. You watch your language, and you're disrupting, you're disrupting this council meeting from the audience. Now, your time is up, one more outbreak, and then you will be restricted from today's council. So let's keep it down. At this point in time, Mr. Rosendahl, for a presentation. And then I got you, but Mr. Rosendahl was supposed to do this earlier, and based on the disruption, it was my bad. So with that said, Mr. Rosendahl, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Englander, before you start, Bill.
Very quickly, just in light of the disruptions, and knowing that we've got a lot of school-age kids that are actually watching Channel 35 today, because it is spring break as well, and a lot of their teachers have assigned it to watch what's going on in local government, I would move that we go ahead and shut off 35, the remainder of this meeting, just in light of what has happened, and looking for a second on that.
Before, what I, believe it or not, had had some discussions with the city attorney, and I think that this is something that maybe we as a council will discuss at some other juncture, but I think I can bring control back to this meeting, and the next disruption, the individuals will be asked to leave the council chambers. So with that said, Mr. Rosendahl, back to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. You know, life is what it is, and we're living it by the moment, and the moment right now is a resolution honoring Jack Fujimoto. With me is Jack and his lovely wife, Grace, and we have Terry Hara, Deputy Chief, who's also here to help us honor this great guy, Jack Fujimoto. It is an honor. He was just recognized in Japan for his incredible involvement with the Japanese-American community. They called it the government's 2011 Fall Decorations. His lifetime contribution to education and promotion of the Japanese language, culture, and history. He received the prestigious Order of the Rising Sun, Gold Rays with Neck Ribbons, for his contributions to the advancement of Japanese language studies and Japanese culture. Dr. Fujimoto was born in 1928 in the national city, San Diego County, to parents Morizo and Himi Fujimoto. Coming from a farming background, Dr. Fujimoto was expected to follow the tradition of the oldest son following the patriarch. However, Jack was released from this tradition, and was the first in his family to pursue a college education. Dr. Fujimoto received his AA degree at Pasadena City College, his BS, his MBA, and his PhD at the University of California, Los Angeles. Dr. Fujimoto taught Japanese language for 12 years at the Venice Gakuin, a private community school at the Venice Japanese Community Center, and worked closely with both the Los Angeles and Culver City Unified School Districts to secure credit for Venice Gakuin Japanese language students to meet the language requirements of the University of California institutions. In 1969, Dr. Fujimoto was selected as Dean of Los Angeles Pierce College in Woodland Hills, where he established the Japanese language as an elective for college credit. He also introduced a course, Man in Humanities in East Asia. In 1979, Dr. Fujimoto became president of the West Los Angeles College, where he introduced and taught Japanese as a recognized college elected course. In 1989, Jack was successful in doing the same, when he became president of the Los Angeles Mission College in San Fernando Valley. Dr. Fujimoto served as president of the Los Angeles Mission College until 1996. From 2002 to 2003, Jack served as superintendent president of the Imperial Valley College in Imperial County, California. Dr. Fujimoto visited many universities as well as the Minister of Education in Japan. For 30 years, Jack served as an advisor to Kobe Women's College in Kobe, Japan, and taught at the Language Institute of Japanese in Odawara Kanagawa, Japan. From 1983 to 1995, Dr. Fujimoto chaired the Board of Trustees of the Institute of Buddhist Studies, a graduate seminary affiliated with the Berkeley, California-based Graduate Theological Union. Since 1986, Dr. Fujimoto has been active with the Japanese Institute of Sorcel. Jack orchestrated the merger of the Institute of its language schools, Sorcel Gakuin. In 2000, Dr. Fujimoto became the merged group's founding chairman and president, a position he held until 2005, when he was chaired the 80th anniversary of the institute in Gagakugan. Today, he serves as a senior advisor to the institute. Dr. Fujimoto authored the book Sorcel: West Los Angeles Japanese Town, A Pictorial History of the Sorcel Community. Though Dr. Fujimoto's lifelong commitment to education and his continuing effort to improve the welfare of others, he has been an inspiration example of service for many to emulate. By the adoption of this resolution, the Los Angeles City Council and the mayor commend Dr. Fujimoto on his numerous professional accomplishments and community contributions, and congratulate him on receiving the prestigious Order of the Rising Sun, Gold Rays with Neck Ribbon Award, from the Japanese government. It's an honor to honor you here in the council of Los Angeles, Doctor. Thank you very much for all your contributions. This is so good. Thank you very much. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl, Rosendahl, for bringing me before the city council. It's not everybody that gets to address the city council, especially on this kind of occasion, so, but Bill doesn't stand alone. I know he has a staff, Len Nguyen and Mary Misano, who urged this particular thing to happen today. So, with all the dramatics that I've listened to this morning, you know, I know that you have a long agenda, and I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Alakon. Mr. Alakon would like to speak, Mr. Rosendahl. Oh, our chief, let's let Chief Hara, in fact, chief, wait for the councilperson here.
Council members, I also rise to honor Jack Fujimoto. Dr. Fujimoto was president of Mission College when I first ran for city council and for many years after, and before I had the opportunity to work on the Mission College Foundation with Jack, even before I was elected to the city council. And I can tell you, you know, it sounded like all he's been doing is hanging out with the Japanese community with all the comments that Bill Rosendahl made, but I can tell you that his accomplishments go far beyond what he has done for the Japanese community. But, especially in the context of the presentation we just did with Univision about how important it is to provide a foundation to communities to understand their history in order for them to be successful in the context of our American democracy, Jack Fujimoto stands in the Japanese community as exactly that kind of icon, where he has, he understood the importance of teaching pride to Japanese-Americans at the same time dedicating his life to education of all Americans in the Los Angeles area. At Mission College, he presided over the college when it was the fastest-growing by-population college in the entire state of California, when a lot of people said that the northeast San Fernando Valley did not want college education. When they built the campus, Jack came in and made sure that it was the most successful community college in the entire system. So Jack, I applaud you for the accolades that you've received within the context of your work with the Japanese-American community and the Japanese community culture in general, but I also, as a friend who knows that you are just as dedicated to academia for Americans across the board, I salute you as well for those great accomplishments, and thank you for the tremendous work you did at Mission College.
Thank you very much, Richard.
Chief, Chief Hara.
Thank you. In echoing Councilman Alakon's comments, I also wanna thank Dr. Fujimoto for his commitment to the community, not only the Japanese-Japanese-American community, but through his work and his commitment, he's been able to educate the broader community of Los Angeles, Los Angeles which is so rich in its diversity. But like every great man, you have a great woman behind that, and I also wanna recognize Jack's wife, Grace Fujimoto, for her commitment and her support all the years for Jack. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Okay, now, I have Robert, and Robert, I can't figure out your last name, California Wireless Association, so if you could educate me, Robert, on how to pronounce your last name.
Absolutely, Robert Jysted.
Jysted?
Jysted.
Gotcha.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of council. I am Robert Jysted with Channel Law Group, and I'm also the vice president of the California Wireless Association. Our association's a nonprofit professional association, one of our primary purposes is to promote positive working relations with local governments. The second week of April each year has been designated by Congress as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. This week honors the thousands of men and women who answer emergency calls, dispatch emergency professionals and equipment, and provide information and reassurance to citizens in times of desperation and need. California Wireless Association would like to take this opportunity to recognize the pivotal role played by telecommunications, dispatchers, communications operators, et cetera, in their support of law enforcement, fire, emergency medical services, and other government field personnel. The work of these unseen first responders is invaluable in emergency situations, and each of these dedicated men and women deserves our heartfelt appreciation. Because emergencies can strike at any time, we rely on the vigilance and the preparedness of these individuals 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. We in the wireless industry are extremely proud to have a key role in providing the infrastructure and systems that make the dedication of these heroes effective. Over 30% of all American homes now only have a wireless device as their phone, and over 70% of all 911 calls come from wireless devices. Our industry has made major investments in the infrastructure improvements to ensure that these calls go through and stay connected, and we thank you for recognizing this important week.
Thank you, sir. Now, to the valley, do we still have Rick Nightingale and Donna Peerman? Donna, you and Rick?
My first?
Rick, I guess, would defer to you.
Do I go first, or him?
Yes, yes, you do.
Okay. Anyway, I look like, when I was seeing Tom Labonge, it looked like I was seeing King John Ferraro. Anyway, I wanted to go, I think I reported Arnold Sachs, if he's saying that the city employees should have retiree health care. If you believe in Obamacare, why can't all city employees have affordable health care? And anything you wanna go on new cost should go on new HIREEs. Anyway, I'm also speaking especially to Councilman Garcetti and Councilwoman Jan Perry, those who are running for mayor. We need to know where you stand on how you will treat city employees. I don't wanna vote for just your record only, I wanna know what your plan to do as mayor. How you treat people, it's not how you treat your equals, but how you treat those who depend on you, and that includes your constituents. So, we need to have a thing where you go on, and I really need to see where all of you stand. I'm leaning toward Eric Garcetti for mayor, but I need to know exactly how you stand. I'm against taking money away from the regular bus system and giving to the rail system. According to the bus rider unions, a lot of people who take the regular buses are like 90% minorities, and may wanna look into not wanting to take it away from the bus system. I'm totally, I'm having trouble getting a bus pass, and I can only get it on the 25th, it's ridiculous that I'd only be able to buy it on one day, and the TAP, I can't find anywhere where you fill up the TAP system except for the orange line. So if you're saying that you want people to take the public transportation, then you have to make it easy for people to take public transportation. Right now, I'm beginning to think, if I didn't know, if I knew how to drive, I certainly wouldn't take public transportation, because I'm almost thinking that only crazy people take public transportation. It's so hard.
Thank you, Ms. Peerman. Rick Nightingale.
Yes, good morning. You know, I see the fire union reps there. How about taking all the money that your people that had to have monkey play in the stations cost millions and millions of dollars to settle, how about taking, giving that back? I think it should be taken out of your budget. Every time one of these people costs the money, it comes out of your budget, then you won't snivel so loud. I mean, I realize people get hurt, but I still don't know why four fire engines have to go to each turnaround when somebody has a problem in an apartment building. I don't understand that, but whatever. Let's go to our famous chief Beck, in the paper, saying that, oh, the illegals that are here can't get insurance, so this is why we're doing this tolling deal. Why didn't he do his homework? I mentioned it before, that they can have insurance. This gentleman, a very good friend of mine, is illegal and so forth, he has insurance. He don't have, he has a Mexican driver's license, and it's called ACES, A-C-E-S-S. He gets insurance, he has insurance? And he said there's about three other companies that do it. There's no problem for that, he's just given an excuse to have, the same as you people, a sanctuary city. And then with Michael Carrion, I guess he knows how to get your attention on that committee, I'll tell ya. But you don't listen to us, like I talk about sanctuary city, everybody just kinda thinks nothing of it and so forth, but boy, he got your attention today, and I'll tell you right now, that's his constitutional right. We disagree with it, but live with it, like we gotta live with the garbage that you people do. You don't like it? Tough. I don't like what he did, but that's the way it is, and that's what we're, America is all about, is exactly what that, it's free speech, same as we should be able to say anything we want, this pulpit, and to each person there, but you say we can't do that. I disagree with that, because we have problems with each one of them.
Thank you, Mr. Nightingale. Okay, Madam Clerk, that brings us to the regular agenda items, correct?
Yes.
And what I'd like to do is take item number two out of order, and I have cards from the public, and it's, I mean, it's been held by cards in the public, so I wanna start off with Carol Schatz, if you could come forward? Followed by, I think it's, well, anyway, Ms. Schatz, I'll let you.
Thank you. Carol Schatz, President of the Downtown Center Business Improvement District. We are here to ask for your support for item number two. We are renewing for the fourth We are renewing for the fourth time our business improvement district. Last time, we received 97.5% favorable vote from the property owners, which reflects, we think, the extraordinary job that we've done and that you all can see by walking through downtown Los Angeles and seeing the enormous revitalization that has taken place. We are in the petition, we have just concluded, in a sense, the petition drive, over 62% of those assessed returned their petitions. And this opens the public process. This is our first public hearing. I think to honor your time, even though others here have not, I would ask the property owners who have joined me today, who are supporting the bid, to forego their public comment and ask for your support for continuing our process of renewing the Downtown Center BID. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Schatz. And thank you, gentlemen, as well. So with that, if I could call Michael Carrion, Arnold Sacks, Arminak Nurjaniyan, and then followed by Zuma Dog.
Yes, my name is Michael Carrion. I also live in the 14th district. And I don't think we should be continuing to bid district downtown. We have properties in El Surino. City owned the property, weeds are growing, walls are falling down, jobs taken, all to go downtown because our council member feels that everything should be downtown. All the money should be spent on bringing back Broadway and trains and everything else, but nothing should be spent in El Surino. So I'm going to be following Mr. Weesar until he learns how to cut this pie evenly and support the community of El Surino. All he's done since he's taken office was allocate somebody for the downtown area specifically when we can't even get calls back from our field deputies, our supervisors.
Let's stay on the topic, Michael.
What's that?
Let's stay on the item, the BID.
Okay, so then, we're asking for them not to go through with this because Mr. Weesar wants it.
Okay. Arnold, I think you were next. Mr. Sacks, I mean.
Yes, thank you. Good morning again, another improvement business improvement district. What really caught my eye is the financial impacts, the fiscal impact statement that mentions the Department of Water and Power property within the district will not be paid from the general fund. And the city owns 11 properties which are generating $163,500,000 in revenue for this business improvement district. So how much property or revenue is being generated throughout the city by city-owned properties for business improvement district? And I believe Carol Schatz mentioned 62 or 66% of the respondents and a huge percentage, a high percentage voted for the business improvement district. But we know that the city and the county and the DWP property will all vote yes. So removing those properties, the city and the DWP, what are you left with? And again, with the historic business district, which is another business improvement district, they're paying 64% of their money, of their funds raised, for street cleaning and public safety, which leaves 36% for other duties. And again, I mentioned that this woman, Shell Fishbine, from the director of New York-based Philanthropic Capital Advisors, notes that anything over 9% to 14% overhead for a nonprofit is inefficient. So for running the business improvement district or running an organization. So what is the overhead for the downtown business improvement district? It's a simple question. Is it 9%? Is it 14%? Is it 20%? All you need to do is ask the question. I'm asking. Can we get a response from somebody downtown? Can we get a response from the business improvement district? The city, $163,000,000. How many other businesses are included in this revenue?
Thank you. Arminak Nurjaniyan, followed by Zuma Dog.
Well, actually, good morning, city council members. Good morning, fellow Angelinos. Actually, I want to oppose with item two, because item two definitely contributes to breeding more corruption in the city of Los Angeles government. And I believe that paragraph seven of resolution number two says that the use of competitive bidding would be impractical, not advantageous, undesirable. Where common law otherwise excuses compliance with competitive bidding requirements. It's concerned about services provided by owner associations. And actually, I believe that competitive bidding, city government should not discard competitive bidding very easily because competitive bidding actually helps the city get the highest quality services at the lowest possible price attached to them. And I believe that if you actually discard competitive bidding, you are discarding democracy because it's a democratic process of offering services on a competitive basis. And you breed corruption with refusing to resort to competitive bidding. And this particular, you know, attack against competitive bidding is, I believe, is a sign of corruption in the city government. Also, always this resolution number two actually proposes not to consider even taxation with fees, assessment fees. So we don't want to consider assessment fees taxes, but assessment fees are sort of a tax section, you know? And that's why I believe that this resolution is faulty and that city council members to strike down this resolution number two because this resolution number two breeds corruption and, you know, and actually hires taxes.
Thank you, Mr. Zuma Dog.
Yes, thank you. Always a controversial issue when you talk about the business improvement district is what you're doing, is talking about forcing property owners to have to pay money to get services the city should be providing. So no decision's been made yet, and the property owners in the downtown business improvement district can still vote no if they don't want to participate. But Zuma Dog, as candidate for mayor, feels I must take the position in public safety that I feel the property owners should vote for the business improvement fee to be assessed. It will raise about $5 million perhaps to provide things like when you see the people on bicycles for the security that helps keep an eye on things and for the improvement of the streets. Because here's why. In case you hadn't heard, Barratoni of Iragosa announced that the city has to do a large number of layoffs. Well, I thought we already had a large number of layoffs. I thought we already had to reduce public safety. I thought we already had to re-
Let's stay on the subject, Mr. Dog.
I don't want to make this mistake today, my friend. I can tell you that for sure.
Stay on the, and you, and quit yelling and screaming. I'm asking that you stay, I'm, okay, no, you know what, you're done, your time is done. No, I'll give you one more chance. Stay on the subject of the bid. That's all I'm requesting.
Because the city squandered the general fund, and they're not going to have services for things like public safety, to keep the streets clean, for trash removal, for trimming the hedges, the property owners should vote for this tax so that they can do it themselves because clearly the city's demonstrated, when you put money in your hands, you squander it and pilfer it and fraud waste and abuse it until the FBI is in town. They're all over this place, baby, because of what you voted yes on. So I say take it out of their hands because they can't do it. Vote for this bid money so that we can have a little extra safety, a little extra sanity, and a little extra sanitation amongst the thieving corrupt-
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Ms. Perry. Hey, point, you can point at me all you want. Don't let this suit fool you. Ms. Perry.
Once the item is voted on, I would like to request that it go forthwith, please.
All right, Mr. Zai.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to commend Carol, why don't you go, Carol? Commend you and your group of folks. While I represent San Fernando Valley, I'm downtown at least four days a week, and as I travel in the downtown central corridor, the security, the ambassadors give you guidance, the cleanliness, and if it wasn't for what was put together, it would be a terrible situation. So I just want to acknowledge publicly what a great job it's done to help the environment, to help the folks down there, to help the businesses. Because when people go shopping, when they go to a restaurant, when they go to a store, they want a clean area, a safe area, and that's what you brought to that corridor. So I just want to acknowledge and congratulations for doing a job well done. Once again, it's showing that there's some leadership that's making it work, and I know Ms. Perry represents that, who's been a strong supporter of this through the years, and it's done tremendous to help the businesses and to bring more and more folks down to the area. So congratulations for a job well done.
Thank you, Mr. Zai, Mr. Labange.
I wanted to rise to congratulate Ms. Perry and Mr. Weesar, for those in downtown, and Ms. Schatz and Mr. Eli. Bids make a big difference. It's the most effective difference, even though we have great acclaim for the Los Angeles Police Department and the statistical analysis that is done to repress crime. Bids have made a big difference, and I want to thank this bid and all bids in the city, and also want to thank the city clerk's office and ask our city clerk to refer that thank you to the city clerk and the whole people who handle this effort. Thank you, bids.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Labange. I think we should prepare to vote on this item.
Excuse me, Mr. President. There's a request to amend the city clerk's report recommendations, number eight and 13, to state the downtown center business improvement district management corporation instead of Central City Association.
Okay, without objection. It will be amended. Okay, let's, again, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Forthwith. Okay, next item.
Item one, call sponsor for cards. And for item number one, the city completed its bond sale on a competitive basis with eight bidders and awarded the general obligation bonds refunding series 2012-a to the winning bidder Barclays Capital Incorporated at a true interest cost of 2.217403%.
Okay, thank you. On that, we have cards. Sean Murphy, Zuma Dog, Arnold Sacks. Mr. Murphy, please come forward.
Yes, I am against this item. We don't, the bonds take too long for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy, Mr. Zuma Dog, followed by Mr. Arnold Sacks.
Okay. Now, I'm not a lawyer. I'm just going to try to give a public comment based on what I see. I'm not a city attorney or the chief prosecutor. I'll do my best job here. Now, it says that, hey, general obligation bonds, okay, they want to take the bank, they want to ask the bank for more money, they need a loan, and they're going to need a loan, and the bank is going to give it to them. Here's why. Because you got a lot of lawsuits that the city keeps getting sued for things because you can just see the way they behave here, and it's, they're getting sued big time all over the place. So the bank is going to give them this money because they have to be able to pay the bank. It's very complicated. The bank has to give the city the money so the city could pay the bank back for the things they're getting sued for. It's effing hilarious. Now, I'd also like to say that what is this money going to be used for besides paying lawsuits? Because I know that there's things like federal stimulus money that's provided for the city and state funds and revenue and all types of things. But at the end of the day, I heard the CIO came out here last week and said the city's going bankrupt and if we don't put new taxes on the people and if the police and fire don't give back and if the city workers don't give back and if everything doesn't work out through a needle through a haystack, well, the city's going bankrupt. So what are you going to, I want to know, we need a real controller. Here's what I want. I want Carmen Tutanich to put an inspector general on this bond money for how it's spent. Because what happens is, we always have the auditor report, Helen Keller, running for mayor, that comes out afterwards and said the money was squandered, that it was pilfered, $7 million in gas was stolen. We lied on the fire statistics. We can't put out fires or save lives anymore. We can't fix the streets. We can't fix the puddles, no sanitation, more firings. So what are you going to do to make sure this money doesn't go out the back door and into everyone's pocket?
Thank you. Arnold Sacks, followed by, well, at least what it says on the card is immigrant, and then followed by Arminak Nurjaniyan.
Thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. The situation with the lawsuits that the city is facing against some banks, it's been discussed numerous times, and the fact that seems that the banks that are in, in the lawsuits involved, that the city is suing, seem to be the favorite sons for getting money to give to the city or for the city council to request, or the city's controller's office to request, or the CIO's office to request these bond sales go through. So they initiate lawsuits, they get sued by the city, and they get paid twice because then they get money from the bonds because they're the ones willing to do business with the devil, and then they get money in a lawsuit. What about the other utility? What about the airport? What about the DWP? Who do they sell their bonds to?
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Immigrant, followed by Arminak Nurjaniyan.
Yes, global immigrant, that's who I am. I want to talk about some global things because they're all tied into the financial situation in the USA and on a municipal level. So here's what's happening. The money's already spent. You need this probably to shore up the budget because you got to pay all the pensions because your pension commissioners lost all the pension money. So now there's no income from that pension money because it's all gone. So the city of Los Angeles, who's liable for that pension money to make the payments to all the firemen and the police, that comes out of the general fund. So yeah, guess what? Just like Greece and just like Ireland and just like Portugal and just like Spain and just like the federal government and everybody else, you've got to just go and make more money somehow and take out a bond. And this is one, $340 million. So basically, you're putting the taxpayers, I just want people on TV to know that they're putting the taxpayers in the lurch now for another $340 million. See, this is the spinoff from what we talked about here, and this is why we're so upset and things get out of control because we're so disgusted at the state of the city after we've sat here and warned you about it, and all you ever cared about was how we said it. Now, there was a guy talking about the subprime thing, the financial crisis and all of that way back in 2008, and that's exactly what you sat here for, for two years with Eric Garcetti and Bernie Parks. Gee, the city's in a crisis, we're firing thousands of people. Gee, folks, here it is today. Let me get the drum roll, please. $340 million general obligation bond, and the taxpayers have to pay it back. And congratulations, Barclays Bank. But guess what? You'll be taking a haircut a couple of years down the road, and that's from an expert.
Thank you, thank you. Arminak Nurjaniyan, okay, if we can, if we could keep it down in the gallery. Mr. Nurjaniyan, please come forward.
Yeah. Good morning, city council members. Good morning, fellow Angelinos. I want to endorse item number one, resolution number one, because this resolution awards the sale of general obligation bonds at an amount of $340 million. But actually, it was to a lowest responsible bidder. So I propose that you city council members change the resolution in terms of highest responsible, highest bidder, because if it's actually in the interest of the city of Los Angeles in order to have, you know, highest bidder, you know, in order to replenish city coffers, you know? And lowest responsible bidder sounds a little bit, this term sounds a little bit irresponsible because, what do you know, lowest responsible bidder, so bidder, you don't, bidder to be responsible. It sounds very much, you know, impractical. And I believe as consequence of this resolution, it's very good resolution, resolution number one. It will be, the city will replenish its coffers to an amount of $340 million. But the city should provide, should conduct progressive politics in order to possible bidders like banks, investment companies to buy your bonds, you know, city bonds, city obligation, general obligation bonds. For instance, the city, I would like to have at least so-called medical marijuana dispensaries being banned completely from the map of the city. Because if a city keeps, you know, allowing, selling harmful narcotic marijuana within the limits of the city of Los Angeles- the limits of the city of Los Angeles, it will tarnish the city image, and will actually scare off potential buyers of a city stock, it is a general obligation bond, you know. And also, raising taxes against those oil production.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. Mr. Cardenas, followed by Mr. Kocorian.
If I can have Natalie from the CIO's office come up, or whoever's the appropriate person or individuals, I have some questions.
The CIO, please.
Thank you, Natalie, thank you, Ha, for, for all the good work that you're doing. I just would like you to share with us, this is something about our general obligation bonds, and what kind of sale method are we using in this case?
Um, Ha, to CIO office, we are using a competitive sale method.
Okay. So we have two main ways that we deal with our bonds. It's either competitive or negotiated, and this is competitive. So in a nutshell, basically, these banks or organizations bid to say, we want to go ahead and sell the bonds on behalf of the city. And who was the lowest bidder, and what was the rate that they're promising to get us out there in the market?
The lowest bidder was Barclays Capital Incorporated, and the true interest cost was 2.21%.
Okay. And we're refunding, which means that we're paying a higher rate now on some of this money, and then we're going to consolidate it down to a lower rate?
Yes, that is correct. We refunded Series 2004A and Series 2005A, which generated 19.7 millions in savings over the life of the bonds.
Wow. And the life of the bonds approximately, how long?
13 years.
13 years. So basically, what we're doing is, we're taking an opportunity to refinance some paper, so to speak, kind of like the way somebody would do, say, if they, they got a loan on a house a few years ago, and they were paying 6%, and then they were able to refinance and say, get a 4% loan. Basically, the bottom line is, they're still paying on the house, but now they're paying a lower rate, which saves that household money, correct?
Yes, that's a good comparison.
So you just said that, how much are we going to save over a period of time?
We will save 19.7 million over 13 years.
And that 19.7 million, that is money that's saved, that normally comes from what, what source? Is that the general fund of the city of LA?
This comes from property taxes.
Okay. But the property taxes goes into the general fund, or how does that work?
No, this strictly comes from property taxes levied on the taxpayers for GO bonds. This is not a general fund impact.
Okay, got it. So the bottom line is, we're saving the taxpayer money, it's a different category than the general fund, but we're just, we're saving the taxpayers' money.
Yes, that's correct.
And Natalie, how are we doing these days when it comes to these kinds of opportunities and taking advantage of these kinds of refund opportunities?
Uh, this is, we have done two GO refundings this year, one we did in October, November?
We did one in July 2011.
We did one in July, and now we're doing one again this fiscal year. And then we have two more refundings that we're working on. Wastewater, where we'll be refunding three different series of wastewater bonds over a six-week period, and then we're also doing a general fund MICLA refunding, which will sell next week.
Okay. And then again, the refunding is to save us money in the long run?
Correct. Because interest rates have dropped so much, we are looking at every opportunity to save not only the general fund money, but also taxpayers, like wastewater.
Wherever we can save, right? If we save money, it goes back into wherever it came from, and that's less money spent.
Correct.
So we're being good stewards for the, for the city of LA public and taxpayers of every kind. But, members, I just wanted to have this little dialogue, because I'm looking forward to us supporting you, the CIO's office, in trying to do as many of these as quickly as possible, because this window was given to us, we don't control the window of interest rates, but right now, we're at a low, low interest rate window, and hopefully, we can actually make it happen as often as possible while this window is still open. So I just want to remind you, Natalie, that I'm ready and willing and able to do whatever I need to do to get the support of my colleagues, even if it means giving your department a few hundred thousand dollars more to hire the experts, or whatever it is that you would need to do to get as much of this done as quickly as possible, because every time we see you, we're saving millions of dollars every single time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very briefly, I just wanted to clarify, and I think Mr. Cardenas actually covered this ground well, but because there were some misstatements given leading into this, I didn't want the public to be confused, because sometimes the loudest speaker isn't always the best informed. And, so I wanted to ask this question. Will, will the action that we're taking today increase the city's indebtedness by $340 million?
No, this is just a refunding, we're not issuing any new money. There are no additional bonds.
So this action doesn't increase the city's indebtedness even by $1, is that correct?
No, absolutely not.
And in fact, over the long run, this saves money by reducing the cost of the debt service, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you very much. Members, this was heard. In Budget and Finance, I respectfully request your aye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Kocorian, and again, thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Let's prepare to vote, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Where does that bring us now?
Item three, call special for cards.
Okay, on that, I have one card from Zuma Dog, and did you say he has one minute left?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Zuma Dog, 2013 candidate for mayor, and you can read all about this department, the LA Housing Department, at zoomadog.com. And I'm here to urge a no vote, because the FBI had to become involved in the LA Housing Department for many issues, including, including the general manager, and things that are happening relating to this item. They want you to give them, like, how much this is here, they want you to give $2.5 million to the housing department, for them to go use it to spend on some contractors. Yeah, I've heard this conflict of interest bamboozle before, it's called a hire myself. Talk to this Roberto Adolpe, I know that the president, Herb Wesson, knows him, because Herb was housing chair the whole time, that the FBI is now investigating, and I had a discussion with Herb Wesson about Roberto Adolpe. So, vote no on this. Adolpe's going down, the FBI's crawling all over, don't get your hands on this stuff.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, there are no speakers in the queue, so let's prepare the vote, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, does that bring us now to item four? I have one speaker on item four, and that's Michael Carrion, if you could please come forward.
Once again, you know, we have another proposition here. You know, as I sit here, I was a little offended by Mr. Keretz, threatened to sock me up, and I sat here and I'm reading this. I'll make Mr. Keretz an offer. I'll wait for you outside, you don't have to disrupt the meeting. If you're man enough.
Okay. Mr. Alacar.
Mr. President, first of all, Mr. Keretz did not, in any way, shape, or form, threaten Mr. Carrion. What he's, Mr.
No, wait, we're not going to have yells and screams from the gallery.
What he said was, he felt like doing that. He's entitled to his emotions under the civil liberties of this country. But for you to make the threat to him, is, you're walking on very dangerous grounds, Mr. Carrion, and I suggest you, it was a threat. I took it as a threat, and, and, and that's what I would testify to. So I suggest that, that, that people read the Bill of Rights, and understand that we do have the freedom of speech and freedom of expression, but there are a lot of fine lines in between that, that people should, should be very careful to tread lightly on both, both sides of this discussion, okay? We could do better, you could do better.
Thank you. Okay, on this item, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That brings us to where?
Item five, call special for cards.
Mr. Arnold, Mr. Arnold Sacks. I think he passes. Okay, so let's prepare to vote on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
And what's next?
Item six, call special for cards.
Okay, on item six, I have Zuma Dog, but his time's expired. I have Matt Dowd and Arminak Nurjaniyan. So Matt Dowd and Arminak could come forward.
All right, all right, it's a Zuma Dog favorite, of course, HUD money, HUD money, I've heard all about the HUD money over the years, and here's a problem. Because it's like $690,000 in HUD money we're approving for the Department of Housing, while they're under investigation, the LA Housing Department, and here's what you're doing now, approving retroactively all eligible expenses incurred by the housing authority of the city of Los Angeles. So it already doesn't sound good, approving retroactively. It means they've already spent all this money, and you've got to replace it. Authorize the housing department to prepare controller instructions, and make technical adjustments and corrections necessary. See, here's the problem. You know, revisions to line items, we've heard all about it from Dennis Zain, the corruption runs deep.
Okay, next, Arminak Nurjaniyan.
Good morning, respectful city council members. Good morning, fellow Angelinos. As a liberal Democrat, I actually endorse this item number six, resolution six, which requires relocation of $395,000 from US Department of Housing and Urban Development, to cities programs of homeless prevention, rapid rehousing program, grant funds, you know, and related actions. Yeah, well, actually, as a thousand of our Angelinos, you know, we wait for, with programs, Section Eight programs, city housing programs, as well as businesses, most real estate businesses, we wait for distribution of Section Eight. And me, like thousands of our Angelinos, you know, signed up with City Housing and Section Eight program, and waiting for those funds, you know, to arrive as soon as possible to its, to recipients, you know, because those people, thousands of Angelinos, we want some.
Thank you, thank you very much. Now, I'd like to go to the Valley, Donna Peerman, Rick Nightingale, in the Valley. Donna Peerman, Rick. Donna, I think I see you, there you are.
Yeah, okay. Anyway, first I wanted to say, I'm sorry what I said about the new hirees, let the city employees and their families, and the unions make that decision on how their benefit should be, because that's, you know, I'm not a city employee. Anyway, I'm, and I'm sympathize with what happened to you, with what Merrick Garland did. Anyway, I, I, anyway, let's talk about this subject here. Anyway, let's, I don't think that all the working people should pay for all these expenditures. We're not paying for the low-income families to get housing, let them go to work. Let them save. If you want others, if you want the others who work hard to try to live a comfortable life, and you make it impossible, you want to be able to give it all over these ones who will not do it themselves. We need to teach these people how to do it themselves, so that they won't have to take it, the money for people who are working hard for this money. And, so, you know, we shouldn't, the working-class people have enough of what they're doing themselves, trying to, trying to, and schooling is a lot of money to be able to send a kid, person to college, and they need to be able to have their money to take care of their own lives, and not send it over to the homeless area, so I think you should vote no.
Thank you. Is, is Mr. Nightingale still there?
He's gone.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Peerman, very much. So on this item, no speakers in the queue, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay. Why don't we just, because I think we can dispense with this quickly, can we go to item 10? We only have two public comment cards on that. So is item 10 before us?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, then let me ask Sean Murphy, and then I've been informed that Mr. Nightingale is no longer at Van Nuys City Hall, so Mr. Murphy, welcome.
Yeah, 10 ayes for this one, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Murphy. On this item, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that brings us to what, item seven?
Uh, yes.
Okay, I have that called special by Cards. So I'd like to call Joseph, I think it's Joseph Edwards from Common Cause.
Uh, it is, I blame, uh, Trent.
Is it Trent? Leno, come, you're next, followed by Daniel King. Okay, you got it, your writing is like mine.
Okay, good morning. Yes, on behalf of California Common Cause, we strongly urge the LA City Council to support AB 1648. This is the second time this year that disclosure bill has been before this body. Back in January, support for Assembly Bill 1148 passed unanimously, and stirred very passionate statements from nearly every single city council member. And while I fully expect this bill to pass unanimously as well, these words, I think, should be on the record, because disclosure is one of the most important matters concerning all levels of government today. A survey conducted last year found that 85% of Californians, including 84% self-described liberals, and 83% self-described Tea Partiers, were for more disclosure in campaign spending. So clearly, transparency is a nonpartisan issue. It is now commonly known that over $235 million was spent solely on California ballot measures in 2010. This is an onslaught of media advertising forced upon the average citizen, which leaves many of us dazed, bewildered, and worst of all, uninformed, about the real forces behind campaign spending. Californians deserve and are demanding to know who is truly funding these campaigns and behind these ballot measures, and this bill will help make that a reality. And also, if this bill becomes law, California will be able to claim that it is a leader in this fight, and set a national precedent that special interests can no longer hide behind and pave the way for us to reforming the Citizens United ruling handed down by the Supreme Court two years ago. Thank you.
Mr. President, Mr. President, council members, Trent Lang, president of the California Clean Money Campaign, the sponsor of AB 1648. Like to thank council very much for taking this up again, especially Councilmember Kocorian for leading this, and Councilmember Weezer for co-authoring it. Of course, council unanimously voted in favor of the similar bill, AB 1148, in January, as Joseph described. This is a bill, the California Disclosure Act bill, that simply makes sense. It just says that, that top three funders of political ads for ballot measures and independent expenditures should be listed very clearly on the ads themselves, including their logos, so that the voters can tell exactly where they are, who's funding the ads. It also requires websites to show the top 10 funders for committee websites. It's simple, it makes sense, it has a huge number of endorsements, the polls show 84% support in the public. Organizations that endorse it include the League of Women Voters of California, California Common Cause, California Church Impact, the California State Retirees, CalPur, Greenlighting Institute, Jericho, A Voice for Justice, the Lutheran Office of Public Policy, and the Redwood Empire Business Association, amongst many others. So, thank you very much for, for your leadership and the support for the city of Los Angeles, and we urge your aye vote. Thank you.
Morning, Council President, Council members, thank you for taking the time for this. I'm going to just simply acknowledge what everyone else has said on this. Thank you for the vote earlier this year to unanimously support this resolution. I just want to quote here, send you a quote. "We've tried to fix this with a new law, one that would simply require that you say who you are, and who's paying for your ad. This way, voters are able to make an informed judgment about a group's motivations. This is common sense," that's President Barack Obama in an address on National Disclosure Act in September 20th, 2010. I ask unanimous consent. Thank you.
Matt Dowd.
Yes, thank you, what a great.
Yes, thank you, what a great item, this is so funny, this one, because this is like, this is like a cat burglar shining a light on himself. I love that, that's why it's called problems getting through this bill, it's gone through the assembly twice, and you know, like, no one cares what the City of Los Angeles thinks about this, just like you don't care what we think about all these things, because all you see is all these comments go through and all these public speakers, but nothing ever changes, everything's auto-set. So, you know, let me, let me talk about this now, you know, you're going to be putting all the political reporters out of work too, first of all, because that's what they do is dig up this stuff. So you're putting more people out of work. But here's what's going to happen, you know, like everything that these politicians do, and you can read all about it on the blogs, it's out on the internet every day, they find a way to get around things, like the First Amendment, is the first example, they try and get around that here, and then they try and get around all these other things, that's why the FBI is investigating the Housing Department.
Stay on the item, Matthew, stay on the item.
I'm on the item, because I'm comparing it to other things that have the same kind of result, you're trying, and here's how they'll get around it, it'll be like, oh, yes, we want to support this thing, and it'll be like, we'll file full disclosure in the ads themselves, the largest major funders of all, political television, radio, print, mass mailing, and online advertising for and against ballot measures, and for independent expenditures for and against candidates.
Thank you. Now we'll go to the valley, Ms. Peirman.
The Hitler is pure evil, you should have called him King George, you should be happy that you were listening.
Stay on the item.
Now I can go for the top, I think it's not, I don't think it should just be the top three, I think we should know all organizations, any big log, big organizations who's funding these, and I want to know who's, who's funding the people who are running for mayor. And now, if you're going to do this on these, again, federal, then I think you should also do it for the mayor, because I like to know who's funding the mayor, and I want to know where their money is coming from, and I want to know if there's any money for the CRA, and that's all I want to say on that.
Thank you, Ms. Peirman. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I obviously want to thank my colleagues for submitting this motion for obvious reasons. We all know that money has taken over the political process and that the recent Supreme Court five-to-four ruling in Citizens United and the Federal Election Commission rolled back the legal restrictions on corporate spending in the electoral process. Misleading political advertising inundates our mailboxes, our inboxes, our radios, our television screens during election seasons with all kinds of odd-sounding, long and confusing political committee names. The fact is, and in many cases far more identifiable and recognizable names, are actually behind these deceptive ads. Requiring full disclosure details is essential in this crazy world of 30-second soundbites and print mailers. This Assembly Bill is a great step in the right direction toward increasing transparency. Obviously, I want to thank my colleagues, Krikorian for putting this up, and Weezer, and everybody else around this horseshoe. Look, money is ruling the political process. If we don't get it out of the process one of these days, the corruption of what money brings will just bring down our great nation. And we have the greatest nation on earth, and to let money dominate the process is an insult to the democracy. My hope is that the day will come that the American people will rise up and tell the broadcasters, you know, we own the airwaves and the cable casters and the radios, and force real discussions to happen with the public's airwaves rather than the soundbite journalism of nothingness that confuses us even more in a democracy where knowledge is power. Thank you.
Mr. Keretz, thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Keretz.
I also thank my colleagues, Mr. Krikorian, Mr. Weezer, for putting this forward. It's bad enough that under Citizens United and that ruling that money now really can dominate the political discussion, but at least we can make it less murky and less confusing, which is the way it is now. Under the current system, a group can call itself Citizens for a Clean Environment and be composed of all the big polluters in the state and propose a pro-pollution initiative, and there's, there's no indication of where that money's coming from. If you list the three biggest contributors, it's much more transparent what the reality is. And so by doing this, at least it's clear where the money's coming from, and it also helps clarify whether the money is coming, mail you get, ads you see are coming from the candidate or coming from special interests. We can't change the impact of money on the political system directly, but at least by adding this transparency, we go a long way towards correcting this injustice. So I thank my colleagues for putting this forward and ask for an eye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Keretz, Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, colleagues, very well said, I respectfully ask for your eye vote.
Okay, let us, on this item, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And Mr. Krikorian, that was a riveting speech, riveting. That brings us to what item?
Item eight, call special for cards.
Okay, let us... We'll go to the valley, Mr. Krikorian.
Fourth with on that.
Fourth with, without objection. Okay, let's go to the valley, Ms. Peirman.
I wave.
Go on.
I wave.
Okay, thank you. Now that brings us back to downtown City Hall, Mr. Sax, Arnold Sax.
Yes, thank you, good afternoon, Arnold Sax, I don't wave, but it's my, one of my favorite subjects, AB 1290 funds, $103,385 in AB 1290 funds for beautification of the Plaza Marizan, Marizan? So I'm wondering, why not CRA money? Here's an item from the 28th of March relative to street standards at Bunker Hill Avenue and Upper Grand Avenue for funding from CRA for the Broad Collection Museum sidewalk widening. So they're using CRA funds in District Number One, but AB 1290 funds in District Number... What district? Oh, District Number One, but they're using CRA funds in Jan Perry's district. And this 1,000, this 1,200, $120,000, is that part of the AB 1290 funds that Wendy Gruel would have done an audit on? Part of the $27 million she talked about in this article from 11/28/11. Redevelopment Agency could not account for $1.7 million, Controller says. And what about the other districts? Again, and poor Mr. Reyes, two weeks ago or three weeks ago when he was talking about the Walmart, said he had no money from CRA, and I even mentioned, what about AB 1290 funds? He's got AB 1290 funds for this project. He was talking about little old ladies in Tokyo who couldn't walk across the street. What about the little old ladies now? What about the AB 1290 funds? Mr. Reyes, he could have been a contender. Come on, where are you? Again, AB 1290 funds.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. On that item, we have Mr. Alakon.
I just want to point out for those listening to Mr. Sax's presentation that AB 1290 funds are CRA funds. They are CRA funds.
Mr. Sax, this is not a give-and-take, so you...
For those in...
No, wait, wait, you're disrupting the meeting.
For those in TV land, the AB 1290 funds are 20% set aside out of the tax increment that comes from community redevelopment, and it is used at the discretion of the city council member, and in this case, he's using it for a beautification project, which is exactly aligned with the purposes of the Community Redevelopment Agency when it existed. So I, I think, since Mr. Reyes wasn't here, I thought I mentioned that these AB 1290 funds are CRA dollars.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Alakon. No speakers on the queue, so if we could, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that brings us, I believe, to item nine?
Yes, item nine, call special for cards, and Mr. President, there's requests to receive and file this item.
Okay. Sean Murphy? Okay, so, Mr. Murphy waves, is Mr. Dowd out of town, out of time? Yes, he is. Yes, you are. Donna Peirman, are you still in the valley?
I only use four minutes.
That's not the way our people are calculating it. Okay, Ms. Peirman.
I see now that you have a special circumstances, you want to go to Arizona. How come you have to go to Arizona to talk about the L.A. Port's $200 million project? It doesn't make any sense. Either you, you can't just suddenly be for Arizona when it's convenient for you to be to Arizona and then totally talking about you were doing the ban on Arizona when you didn't agree with their policies, which is not fair, because I believe that a city should be able to, to be able to have its policies different from Los Angeles. So I'm just saying that, I just wanted to say that I'm, I don't think you should, if, you know, you got to stop saying that you're banning Arizona if you're going to use Arizona for your purposes and using it to talk about Los Angeles' needs in Arizona, so, this is ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you. No speakers in the queue, so on this item, Madam Clerk, can we open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, where does that take us on the agenda now, Madam Clerk?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Consider them posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Buscagno requests to leave by 11:00 a.m. on April 18th and to be excused on May 22nd for city and personal business respectively. Councilmember Labons request to be excused on April 20th for city business. Councilmember Weston requests to be excused on April 27th and June 12th for city and personal business. Councilmember Perry requests to be excused on May 16th for city business, and Councilmember Cartney's requests to be excused on June 1st, 8th, and 15th for city business.
Okay, without objection, those are all approved?
The desk is clear.
Good. Members, announcements, members. Seeing no announcements, could everybody in the council chamber please rise? In fact, before we go to adjournings, Mr. Alakon does have an announcement.
Ad-Hoc Committee on Waste Reduction.
Richard?
Mr. President, the, I just wanted to announce the Ad-Hoc Committee on Waste Reduction will be meeting in the council chamber, not in, on the 10th floor as previously notified.
Okay, adjourning motions, members. Mr. Labons?
I would like to join.
This being disrupted, again, he's being disrupted. City Attorney, I just wanted noted for the record that one of the individuals that have been disrupting this meeting all day left disrupting this meeting.
If, I might augment the record and say that Mr. Dowd was yelling... Sorry, and if, I'd like to augment the record and note that Mr. Dowd was yelling and using profanities as he left the room as Councilmember Labons was attempting to speak.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Labons, for an adjourning motion.
About this today, but he sure was someone special. Mike Wallace, 93 years old, lived a life, covered everything, and CBS was the real strength of the 60 Minutes program. His passing sets a different era, and I'm somewhat glad that we had a Mike Wallace in 60 Minutes, which was the place to be, at Sunday night. God bless Mike Wallace and his family, 93 years is a great run, and his impact will last forever. I ask all members to join in.
Without objection, Mr. Zine.
Ed Savco passed away April 2nd, born September 28th, 1925, in Homestead, Pennsylvania, grew up at that location, graduated high school, enlisted in the United States Navy, where he served from 1943 to 1946 as a Seaman First Class on the USS Waller. Soon after he left the Navy, married his life partner, Mrs. Veronica Mae Savco, on April 11th, 1947. Couple relocated to Van Nuys, California, from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania after World War II, where Ed would bring his dreams to fruition. They stumbled across this building made entirely out of volcanic rock, which had been a stagecoach stop in the 1910s. They purchased this rock store in 1961, created a small-town grocery store out of it. As people started flocking to this area, more and more people started taking notice of the small-town store. Not only were carloads of people stopping by for cold refreshments, but motorcyclists began pouring in from all directions. The Rock Store became a motorcycle heaven among Curvy Canyon roads, Santa Monica Mountains. Ed and his wife, Vern, built a reputation for the Rock Store as one of the top tourist destinations and a hangout for the who's who of the motorcycling world. Rock Store is the famous motorcycle stop in Southern California, if not the world, has been featured in many commercials, films, music videos, television productions, and magazine photos. On any given weekend, you can stop by and chat with the celebrities who frequent the Rock Store. Jay Leno enjoys bringing up many of his latest toys so that everyone can see it. Arnold Schwarzenegger often pops his head in for a quick bite, even before spinning off into the canyons. Matt LeBlanc, Tommy Lee, Harrison Ford, and others can be spotted hanging out on the patio with friends you really never know who you're going to see walk in the front door. Ed will be forever remembered among motorcycle enthusiasts around the world, preceded in death by his sister, Margaret Mills, brother Elmer, and son Edward. Funeral services held today at 10:00 a.m., followed by a burial at Pierce Brothers Mortuary. Celebration of his life at the Rock Store starts today at 2:00 p.m. Family has asked kindly that in lieu of gifts or flowers, a donation be made in the name of the American Heart Association for research only in the memo section of the donation. Survived by his sister, two of his three children, seven grandchildren, may he rest in peace. It was a famous place for many, many people, I spent many hours there, the famous Rock Store on Mulholland Drive. Ed Savco, may he rest in peace.
Other adjourning motions, members? Seeing none, this council meeting is adjourned.